Yeah.
Thank you, everyone, for your patience. Excuse my delay. It's seven oh six and we are getting started with the regular meeting of the South Pasadena Library Board of Trustees for today, Thursday, February ninth, twenty twenty-three. Sean, we can start with call order, please.
Sure. Dean Serwin.
Here.
Annie Chang Long.
Here.
Bianca Richards.
Present.
Kenneth Gross.
Here.
Edward Pearson.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay.
And Janet's gonna be a little bit.
Okay. Uh, thank you for that. So, let's just first public comment. Uh, and then introduction of our new trustee. So I'll follow the, uh, the rules. Public comment guidelines. Do we have? I hear we have public comments?
We have an observer, but she doesn't have a comment.
And there were no public comments received.
Oh, okay.
Oh, she's.
I have a public comment on the strategic planning when you come to that.
Okay.
I do.
Fantastic. Um, so moving on then, if there's no public comment. Uh, we have no presentation. We have a action discussion, uh, but we're going to start with introduction of Edward Pearson, our new trustee. Hello all.
Hello.
Edward, why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself?
Okay, well, this is my second stint with the Board of Trustees. I served from twenty eleven to twenty sixteen. And so roughly six years off, and here I go again. I've lived in South Pasadena since nineteen seventy-five. I'm a widower. I have two adult children and four grandkids. I practice law. I'm officially a downtown L.A. lawyer, but I work at home. I work almost completely with my adult daughter who's in Alcatina. The two of us are, uh, just trusting the state warriors. And, uh, I'm really looking forward to this time on the board.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Does anyone have any questions for Edward? You go by Edward or Ed?
I'm Ed. Yeah.
That out of the way. Nice to have you on the board, Ed. It doesn't have it on here. But I would like to pull an audible and ask Janet Brown, our new.
Yeah, you can reorder the agenda and he, um, uh, has council liaison communications, item eleven. So if you want to just.
I, I, what I'd like to do is not completely reorder, but just ask her to introduce herself and.
Okay, um, okay, thank you. I apologize for being late. There's a city council meeting. Yeah, there's a council meeting in Guanajuara. So I just left a little early, but, um, housing elements being considered at the same time. So I'm thrilled to be the liaison to the Library Board of Trustees and, um, I, library is on my, was on my list of priorities when I was a candidate for city council.
Yeah.
Um, I've already, I talked to Chris Holden on July fourth and said, you know, to see our mother, that ten million dollars, and we also get ten million, please. So I'm thrilled to be here. I really, I love the library. I want to thank everybody here for just all your commitment over the years to the library. So anything I can do to be helpful, please let me in.
Great, well, welcome. Glad, glad to have you. Um, now, uh, back to our regularly scheduled programming. Um, minutes of the regular Library Board of Trustees meeting of July twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, did everyone have an opportunity to review those minutes?
January twelfth.
Did I say February again?
No, you said July.
Just said July. They both start and end without, you know, the same letter. July, uh, twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Did everyone have an opportunity to review this?
Yeah, and I, I moved to approve the minutes of January twelfth, twenty twenty-three.
Oh, second.
Okay. Sean?
Hey, Dean Serwin.
Okay.
Actually, I, since everyone's present, I don't think we have to do roll call doing.
Do you do acclamation, right?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay. Uh, if, if no one has any opposition, we'll approve by acclamation.
And then I think just because Ed wasn't here, so then he wouldn't vote.
I would abstain.
And I wasn't here.
Oh, yeah, Kenny wasn't. That's right.
Okay. So Ed and Kenny have abstained. Myself, uh, and Bianca and Annie, uh, approved by acclamation. Uh, let's move forward to the library strategic plan. Um, did everyone have an opportunity to review the draft and then the revised plan?
Yes.
What's comments, question, concern?
It just, it looks, what, you know, what Annie and I were earlier talking about, I, I love the way that they, uh, broke out, uh, the task and then the outcome. It's very clear. Um, and it's a very visually pleasing and, um, yeah, and I, and some of my suggestions look like they got incorporated, so thank you.
I did not go back to look at the photos. I knew.
I fixed those. Yeah, they got fixed.
True. Um, a quick, a quick look through.
Yeah, and I might just say a couple of words just for the, for the background and just kind of remind everybody how we got to this document. Um, you know, we had our kickoff meeting with the consultant in early June and, um, in the come, in the weeks following that, we put together our community advisory committee, which was thirteen people from the community to help us through this process. Um, the consultants were on site in early July and they met with staff at that time. We had twenty-three staff in that meeting and we spent about three hours in a working session. That same visit, they met with you guys and they met with the friends that visit and they met with the community advisory committee that visit. And that visit, we really focused on kind of the high level, um, look at the community in terms of the community's strengths and challenges, um, to then look at how those play into the library services. Um, so that was our first onsite visit with them. They were here for a couple of days and then we went into the survey. And we spent, I think the survey was open for five weeks or so, um, and we got more than four hundred, uh, responses, which we were really happy about. Um, during that same period, I provided the consultant with all kinds of data and statistics that they could use to kind of do an analysis of our, of our location and, um, get to know more about us. Um, and then the consultant during that same period did one-on-one interviews with five, um, five people that I think were, were really important. Uh, the director of community services, Shannon Robledo from the police department. Um, a board member from Spark and the high school librarian. Who am I missing? Somebody. Back here. Oh, Yuki, uh, Cuchin from the South Pasadena Chinese American Club. So after all that information came together, the, the results of the survey, all of the engagement that we had done in the community. Um, they came back on site in September to go over the results and of the engagement. Um, and that was also, we had a public meeting, we had a staff working session. Um, they met with the community advisory committee and then subsequent to that, we had two Board of Trustees meetings where we talked about the strategic plan. One was a special meeting just to go over the engagement results in detail. And then after that, we've been working, like in October and November, working on finalizing the goals and the tasks. Um, and those were brought to you guys in December to look at those. We got some good feedback from you about the language and, and the content. So those changes have all now been made and that's how we got to where we are now. So I'm hoping none of this is a surprise to anybody after all these meetings that we've had. But I'm happy to, um, you know, this is your chance to, if you have an issue, if you have something we would like to see changed, let me know and, and that's, we'll, we'll pursue that.
Yeah, I'm questioning what is our, uh, market is a good word, but who's going to be reading this? Because I think if it's the public at large that might have a suggestion to it, if it's, if it's more internal use, then no.
Well, the public will have access to it, but what we will do is prepare like a brochure that the public will have, that will have kind of the, the gist, but not that level of detail. So I think the audience in many ways is, um, the city council and then staff so that we can follow this plan over the next five years and accomplish these tasks.
Um, so this won't be on the website for anyone today?
It will.
Okay.
Yeah, it is, it is. The old one is there and this one would, would go up there as well. But, you know, I don't know how many members of the community would take the time to read it, but I think council members and city staff and library staff and of course you guys and the friends, um, have a vested interest in reading it in more detail.
I would think slash hope that anyone wanting to do business with the library would also avail themselves of this information so they could understand what we're, we're looking to accomplish.
Perspective employees as well.
Yeah.
Just smart research.
But what were your?
Oh, only because when I was reading it, I, it took me like, I guess a little figure, took me like a couple paragraphs to figure out where it had the task or the objective and then it had outcome.
Mm-hmm.
It was as if it already had, this was the outcome of what we did. I know that's the outcome that we see. So proposed outcome or, or hopeful outcome, I thought. I didn't know if there's a way to speak to that. That's what I asked if the general public could see it, because maybe they might be initially, then I doubt it.
Well, hopefully with the implementation timeline, following that section. Hopefully they get the idea that, um, this is over the next five years and, yeah, I mean, all I can do.
No, I know. This is just me.
Well, there's, there's the implication based on the fact that this is for the next five years, like Kathy just said, you know, it is a valid point. Um, that if, if the goal with such an abbreviated document is that it is going to be something that would be, um, easily interpreted as an info, uh, infographic document. Um, perhaps on the table of contents, we could, um, say operational goals and tasks with an intended outcome.
I was gonna make the same suggestion, maybe on the top of each, just as a final edit, because on the top of each section, it's goals, tasks and intended outcomes.
Yeah. Yeah, so, yeah, at each point where it says go, the operation goals and tasks, operations goals and tasks, uh, and outcomes. I guess it's not just operational goals and tasks.
Yeah.
Our goal. Maybe we could just say our goals and intended outcomes. Because that's what it is. We have a goal and we have an outcome.
I think each section has its own, um, like what type of goal is, what is operational facility?
Sure.
You're, but Dean's saying, do we need the word tasks?
Yeah, just, just above our, just above our goal. Yeah, I, I'm not, I'm wondering, yeah, does it need tasks? Because the, we, the, um, the operational goal and the outcome in private, what's what's necessary to do? And we don't really enter task, we're not really stating a, uh, uh, like a flowchart or a, a, a set of boxes to tick.
Yeah, because they're not actually tasks on the list, maybe.
It's not.
Well, I mean, some are, but some are tasks, but then on the timeline under the task.
So maybe operational goals, tasks and outcomes.
Intended outcomes.
Yeah.
Intended outcomes, right?
Yeah.
So, common, operational goals, common.
But I don't have to put outcome on each one. I mean, inside of outcome on each one.
Yeah. So just, just update that. The only thing that I would note is that on the implementation timeline, it talks about fiscal years. I don't, I don't know what the fiscal year of South Pasadena is, and maybe just a little footnote. Fiscal year, July to June.
Right, but I assume that's going to be July, but maybe.
Yeah, because it looks like we're not doing anything in the first two quarters of the year, but because they're already.
Yeah, because there's no, the, the quarters aren't listed, so.
And you think a footnote is adequate to, to explain that?
Yeah. I don't think we need to say that. That we don't need to say every time. Right.
Okay.
And that could even be, it doesn't necessarily have to be on the timeline. Uh, unless that, you know, visually works. It, it could be, um, where we reference the timeline and the, uh, table of contents. Uh, operational timeline, uh, fiscal year, uh, you know, uh, put there, put no fiscal year here, July again.
Yeah, I, definitely, I think it needs to be on the, the timeline itself. I don't know if it needs to be in the.
Yeah, but Dean, don't you think? I mean.
I'm just trying to avoid it.
But yeah, but just maybe just down here in little, in little font.
Could be on each one. Yeah.
What a fiscal.
Very small.
Yeah.
Very, fiscal year, July to.
Yeah, I don't think it would be, um, yeah.
It'll still confuse the heck out of people because then you have to think, okay, so the twenty twenty-three fiscal year goes from
July.
July of twenty twenty-two to June of twenty twenty-three, or July twenty twenty-three to June of twenty twenty-four. So.
I think going back to Kenny's observation, who exactly is going to be reading this?
Yeah. The government that knows what the fiscal year is, for the most part.
Okay, so we, we've got intended outcomes, we've got fiscal year footnote, what else?
No, otherwise Janet's a, it's a pretty strong document.
I thought that you guys did such a great job of spilling so much information. At one point, you had so much text, so it looks really good.
Good. Well, you're, the feedback about, um, from when we first shared the goals and tasks with you guys was really good and that helped us kind of tighten up the language. So.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not overwhelming at all and I expected it to be.
Yeah.
I gotta get the verse so I can read this and then I saw it and, you know, you go right through it and you, you get the points. It was really well done.
Oh, that's great. It's great. It's been a long time coming. A long time. Thank you. Thanks for all your help and input throughout.
So now then, then the next step is then this with a couple of little cleanup things, then this is what's presented to the council?
Yeah, so the next step, the intent that we have is that we would hold a joint study session with the city council and the library board of trustees. Both to present the strategic plan, um, and also to talk about kind of the future of the library facility. What direction does council want to see us going in and also talking about the critical infrastructure um, improvements that we have the opportunity to apply for the grant funding for, because that requires matching funds. So it's kind of all lumped together.
But do, do you then set the agenda for that or does the city council set the agenda for that?
The city and manager and I will work on it together. Yeah. I mean, I, I would have to prepare a, a staff report for council, you know, that has lots of background information and I would be giving a presentation. I mean, I think there's a lot of information that's useful besides just what's in the strategic plan. You know, we would probably look at some statistics about the library and, you know, talk a little bit about usage.
Augmentation.
Yeah, yeah. But I, yeah, so that, that's something we'll be working on, the timing on that. Um, it's a little bit tied to uh, my work with Public Works to get the architectural and engineering consultant to do the assessment for the critical infrastructure projects that we have in mind. Um, because that, those are, that's who's going to give us a cost estimate. So I, I would think this is going to be March at this point. I, you know, I think we had thought maybe late February, but I, I think that's unlikely. So I think that's where we are. But it, but, um, you know, I think that as far as the strategic plan goes, I looked at the last one and the operation study and both of those went to council as receive and file. Yeah. Which is surprising that the, the the library operation study went twice to council, one time for direction and then the final was just receiving file. So we'll be going to council with the presentation, but really, once you guys adopt the plan, it's adopted and it's our marching orders and we'll start working on it. So what I would recommend for tonight is that.
Adopt as amended.
Yeah, exactly.
So, um, I would like to make the recommendation that we adopt with the two amendments, which if you.
Oh, yes, Sally had a public comment.
Oh, that's right. I'm so, I'm so sorry.
Oh, no problem, no problem.
Let me, uh, let me, uh, start my little talk here.
Agreement.
Yeah.
Uh, regarding the section on, uh, facility goals and tasks and the critical and safety related needs of the library. Um, just to let you know, I've been following the library board uh, for probably five years. And involved with the friends and efforts to, um, create a way to raise significant funds. So the needed upgrades and repairs. Uh, others and myself remain committed to that and are available to work with you on upcoming projects. That's it.
That's it?
Yeah.
Two minutes and twenty-four seconds, Todd. Uh, I, I would be, uh, remiss if not commenting that, um, I'd be shocked if you weren't. Nothing happens in this town without.
Well, I just, there were new people here and I know everyone else knows that, but just want, you know, we're on board and ready to start running.
Is there any need in the facility section convention to request? Because it's such a, uh, life-changing thing for the library.
On page ten?
It is.
Yeah.
Let me mention it in the timeline.
Um, yeah.
Otherwise, I think just to go into detail on it would be distracting. But it does need to be acknowledged as, as something that we have.
It says taking into account Carlisle Story Room requests. Yeah, it's in there.
So, uh, again, I'll, I'll make, and please forgive me for not, uh, allowing your public comment earlier. I'd like to, uh, make a motion that we adopt the proposed, uh, strategic plan with the two, uh, augmentations, which if you could repeat them for us, Kathy.
Yes, we are adding, uh, verbiage about intended outcomes, both in the table of contents and in the goals and tasks section, and we are also adding a footnote to define the city's fiscal year.
On each timeline.
Yes.
We have second.
Yeah, my second. I'll second with the, um, uh, amendments as stated.
Sean, I'd like to do a voice vote, since I think this is a significant thing, should I run an affirmation?
Sure. Dean Serwin?
Yes.
Bianca Richards?
Yes.
Annie Chang Long?
Yes.
Kenneth Gross?
Yes.
Ed Pearson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Woo-hoo.
Congratulations.
Well done. And again.
Yes.
To the staff.
Yeah.
You guys, you guys did a lot of hard work on this.
Again.
Okay, well, that was, that was exciting.
Yeah.
Um, now, uh, at the end of this year, we get to say, hey, we actually did do the strategic plan.
Oh, yeah.
So, uh, let's talk about, uh, our volunteer recognition event, which I believe is coming up in a couple of months.
Yes, April, uh, Sean can remind us of the exact date. Yeah.
The twentieth, twentieth or the twenty-third.
It's National Library Week. It's the third week of April. Um, the reason I wanted to talk about it is because we had hoped potentially to have, uh, musical entertainment. Um, but the, the folks that the restoration concerts, um, were asking to do that for us are not able to commit. So I think we need to start thinking about what we want to do and, um, whether we want to bring in a speaker, which is what we had done, have done for many years. Um, all different kinds of speakers. We've had journalists, we've had authors, we've had, um,
Last year was wonderful.
Yeah, we had Olivia, but I don't think I can, like, I don't think I can just bring Olivia back next year.
Back to back, but yet again, that was a, a phenomenal, uh, uh, presentation that she did, uh, so much so that I actually had her do it for another group in town.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so I guess I'm, I'm asking you guys to think about ideas that you might have.
Um, I don't have an idea for a program, but, um, my idea would be to, uh, we have a wealth of talented musicians in town that perhaps we could find, uh, one or two who could even something as simple as just playing, uh, acoustic guitar lightly in the corner while the, the event is taking place to, uh, to have, uh, background music for the, uh, the, the, the food part.
Okay.
Rather than a specific performance, we can't have the, uh, the restoration concert performance.
Okay.
Is the theme just a thank you volunteer? Do we have a theme?
No, we don't have a theme.
Are we gonna have the, um, the brunch again? That worked out really well.
I think we'll do that again the morning.
That morning worked out really well.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I think we'll do that again.
So, uh, in terms of ideas for the actual program. You mean what type of speaker or should it be a speaker?
What type of speaker? You know, if you've heard of an interest, somebody interesting with some interesting project that they're, you know, again, we're, the, the audience for this is, is the volunteers, so you know, they're.
Attempted to have someone who can speak to the importance of story time for young minds, since we're focusing on the request and the building of whatever that is going to be, that maybe that would be something that would be a topic. I don't, I don't know the particular speaker.
Mm-hmm.
But a, a, a topic, um, to, to delve into.
Okay. Other ideas topical?
Just volunteerism.
The, uh, um, the cynic in me, or maybe not cynics the right word, would be to have a speaker who can focus on EBI.
Equity.
Oh, yeah, there's electronic dance.
Well, we could have an EDM artist while the, uh, uh, presented. I, I, I just feel that, uh, that something needs to be, uh, promoted and supported.
And there are some really great speakers on that, so that's an interesting idea, kind of about, um, stories and how they need to be inclusive and what does that mean and that, that's.
Well, yeah, I was just gonna, I was just thinking, uh, I'll keep my political comments to myself, but, uh, having maybe someone who can speak to the importance of the presentation of these EBI concepts, uh, in, in stories to you so that, uh, a new generation can, can be raised with these concepts from the beginning instead of trying to force them on them once they're older and set in their ways.
Mm-hmm. Interesting. I like it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that's, yeah, that's great. If you guys have other thoughts, just shoot us an email. Um, if you come across something or see something in the newspaper that you think, oh, yeah, it'd be interesting.
Actually, I have a friend who just wrote a book. I don't know what her, her, um, agreement is with her agents and stuff, but, um, she's been speaking, she just spoke at Romans last year too, that her book was about immersive storytelling. So she actually did the whole storyline for the new, um, Star Wars land at Disneyland. And so she was the, um, she's a, she was a Disney Imagineer. And she made that whole, um, storyline and she built that. She built one in Shanghai and Paris.
People would love to hear about that.
That she told when she did the presentation at Romans was about her growing up, um, Indonesian and what that meant and how it meant, um, reflecting those stories and all the characters and how, you know, as
That would be amazing.
She really did it for, um, it was amazing. There was like all these people that are like profusies. It was really strange. I went to graduate school with her husband, but like all these people that want to work at Disney Imagineers that were following her, but I found it fascinating.
Oh, yeah.
You know, not, that's not my career, but it was really.
That would be really, I think people would, people would love that.
And she's just really funny and was really into it.
People would love it.
Tough too.
Yeah.
Yeah. Sounds great.
Yeah, I could ask her.
Yeah.
But it is, it was, an interesting thing would be to, to see if, if she can focus her conversation into how, because if you've been to, to Galaxy's End, I think we could talk Galaxy's End or whatever, whatever that is. Uh, the, um, there is an innate sense of inclusion because you have so many different races of aliens all living together in one place.
Yeah.
Um, that, and I'm, I'm gonna guess that that was probably an intentional theme. Uh, so that it probably would lend to the conversation.
Yeah, and her book has a, um, a section on that too.
What's the name of that?
Immersive storytelling. That's actually the name of the book, yeah. So it's a, it was a project that actually took off.
I love that idea.
Yeah, but I'll ask her. I know sometimes, um, authors have agreements with their publishers.
Sure.
About where they can't recast the movies you can talk about. She could hold, uh, she could still get three different decks all last year, so.
Hmm, yeah. I mean, usually if it's a promotional, you know, yeah.
Voting the voter.
And, yeah.
I would think at a library event.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, I don't, she would definitely. So their friend, she's, I'm sorry, you talk about agents, I do.
All right.
I can follow up.
Yeah, I think that sounds really exciting.
Yeah, her name's Margaret Carrington. Yeah, she's, and then her husband, um, Irish, so it's really interesting. They both come from these like non-American families too, to this.
Thank you.
Wow. Wonderful. Well, uh.
Do we know the date though?
The twentieth, is there? The twentieth, I have it on my calendar. The Thursday, someone's twentieth told me.
That's what I thought it was.
That's, mm-hmm.
Um, I'm gonna move us on. California State Library, uh, item six, California State Library Building Forward Infrastructure Grant. Um, you mentioned that a moment ago when discussing the, uh, the joint session that we'd be having.
Yeah, I kind of, um, jumped myself, so I don't have much to add except to let you know that I am in the process of working with Public Works with a firm called Marx and Akubo. And they're affirmed that, um, this is what they do. They do building assessments. Um, they have people with, um, accessibility expertise. They have, you know, people with all different kinds of expertise, architects, engineers. So that's the firm that we'll be working with. They're, they're affirmed that the city has, uh, a contract with for professional services. So we met with the, the two principals that we would be working with. So we met with the the two principals that we would be working with. And now we we need to get back to the firm with our scope of work. So that's sort of in Public Works's lab that I checked in with Ted Gerber, the Director of Public Works today. So we'll see if we can keep that moving forward, because obviously if the application deadline, they haven't announced the deadline yet. But it states that it's the first, the first quarter of the calendar year, so March.
So it's time to.
Yeah, we need to get, get cracking.
Can you speak briefly to Building Forward? Is there a, is there an overarching mission statement that they provided in terms of the grant?
Yeah, so the Building Forward Infrastructure Grant is funding from not this fiscal year's state budget. But the prior fiscal year's state budget, there was about four hundred and thirty million dollars. That was allocated to the State Library of California to to award with grants specifically for critical infrastructure and safety related things. So it's very much and and that literally is the language that's in the state budget. So it's it's things like security, ADA issues. You know, electrical issues, HVAC issues, accessibility issues. Those are the kinds of things that have that have been getting awards. They've done the grant in two rounds. So they've already given out like, I wanna say like two hundred and thirty million from the first round. And now this is the second round, so there's still a hundred and thirty or something million left, maybe a little bit more than that.
We apply in the first round or?
We didn't apply, we we put in, again, we really, at that time, the city was looking at its ARPA money that it got from the federal government. And really, we had no, it was just way too soon to know whether the city would be able to match. You know, it was just too soon.
And these are matching funds.
Yeah.
But this is what Chris Holden, isn't, is this the CR Madre?
I don't think so.
No, a couple of libraries recently have gotten just earmarks for just here's five million dollars or ten million dollars from the state.
And not matching.
No, just just because through their own representatives and working behind the scenes, we haven't asked for that. Yeah, we haven't asked for that. I mean, I think.
You have to ask for?
Yeah, you have to start working with your representatives and, you know.
Get on their radar. So, but it's, it's Mike Fong now.
Yeah, so but Chris told me at the pancake practice was that that he was then gonna not be our representative anymore, but he said that I'd be happy to work with you and Mike. And and figure out kind of how to, and let you know kind of how to do this.
So I'm confused, it's two separate things, so we just have to ask Mike Fong for money, we might get it. The other one is we have to apply for a grant.
I'm guessing that the the request for blanket funding has to have a an intentional forward looking.
Well, no, I know, I know, but but it just seems like, yeah.
It'd be interesting to know, Kathy, what what the CR Madre Library, like, did they, did they have a plan? Did they have a proposal, like, how far along a proposal?
Yeah, how long were they? And and Blendale, I know, got money, Laura Friedman.
Oh, yeah.
Done that for them. Yeah, well, Pasadena got state, yeah, state money because of the the, yeah, the closure.
I think it's our turn.
Yeah, I mean, it's it's certainly a possibility and and I looked really closely at the budget, the not this budget, but the year before. And there were a number of, again, you know, earmarks for specific libraries to take on specific projects or do specific things. And I think like Janet says, there's, this is like a massaging behind the scenes, you know, it's it's a political ask, so you're spending political capital, I'm assuming, to to try to get people on board to help you with that. But I think, yeah, I think, you know, it's it's one of our avenues to try to come up with the funds that we would need to to do a big project.
It does make sense, though, that considering as Sally and her public comment was noting. And as you've mentioned before, and presumably will again, we have an open question. Of are we going to fix what's broke? Or tear it down and build something that will go forward for the next fifty to a hundred years? And so we may want to consider that ask to be, once we have made that decision.
I think absolutely that the council has to give us direction and and then so the council, the council gives us direction to pursue site planning and design work for a new library. That that's starting this whole process. And then you then have design and materials that you can show the prospective donors. And, you know, I think all these things kind of are flowing together.
It could be good seed capital for that.
Yeah, I mean, the the bequest that we have is already, you know, we've already got whatever that's gonna be, two point something million toward new library facility, so.
Is there anything we should be doing to encourage council to go give us that direction?
Well, I think that you guys will be in the joint, the study session with council. So you'll be able to, you know, participate and and say whatever you want to say. We'll obviously be presenting the strategic plan, which outlines pretty clearly that that's one of the goals that we'd like to pursue. And I think the city manager has been talking to council members individually behind the scenes. And so I don't think it's gonna come out of nowhere for council members. But, yeah, I think just participating in the study session is is the next logical step.
Are there any like timelines, like, like, like the Carlisle funds? Is there not, do we have to spend it in a certain amount of time, so we can just hold on to it for five, six, seven years?
I, my guess would be that we have to have, there is a a secondary beneficiary. So if we are just socking it away in the bank with no intention towards it, my big word these days is intention. Declared intention towards it, then they might come and say, you have X number of months to, you know, declare a plan. Or we're gonna say you're not using it. But I think that we've got, we've got a quote, we have a trust lawyer on the board now, but I'm guessing that we have a significant time window before that's gonna become an urgency. So it it's something we should consider that we don't wanna just let it lie fallow. But I think we, as we just discussed, I think we have enough in incentive and impetus to push the project forward one in one direction or another. I think this fiscal year, we're gonna wanna know which way we're going.
Yeah, and I think that because we call it out in the strategic plan, that that helps us in that regard, that that this is that part of that process is that quest. I mean, I don't think they expect us to build it immediately. You know, they know that if you're doing a construction project, you're gonna have to take a number of steps. So, yeah, I don't think that the, that the, is it the American Lung Association?
Yeah.
I don't think they're gonna come after us. But, yeah, we we wanna show that we're yeah, we need to show that we're moving and that we're planning and that we're taking steps in in that direction.
For this grant, it's the the matching requirement, it's those.
The matching requirement exists, we are eligible for a twenty-five percent reduction. So instead of one to one, you know, if it's, they give us ten and we need ten, we actually only need seventy-five percent of ten and then they will cover that difference. Yeah, so that's nice. And again, all of that will be very explicitly spelled out in this study session. So that council has, council and you guys have all the facts at your disposal. But I, you know, I envision, you know, if we do end up planning to build a new library, it's gonna take many years. And this facility has the critical, it needs to last for another five years or six years. So I think that we'll be working in parallel on correcting these critical things. And then planning, you know, for the future. So that's how I see it, putting it out anyway.
Not that I think staff doesn't have enough on their hands. But it might be worthwhile going into that discussion to have the plan in place of what do we do in the meantime? If we do decide to tear this building down and rebuild it, how do we continue library services during that time window?
Yeah, I mean, that's a big question.
So maybe we can start to look at what others have done and they've done.
It's gonna be in in our town where we don't have that much.
One library.
I mean, a lot of, a lot of places, they're empty storefronts, they're vacant buildings, but I don't know that we, you know, we don't have so many of those types of things in this small town, but.
Sonic Lodge.
No parking.
There's parking in the back.
In the back.
Limited, about the same as we have here. So.
So, yeah, I'll take in and take it, no, taken, thank you.
If no one has any other questions, I'd love to move us forward on to what I asked about. Thank you for putting it on to the schedule so quickly, Kathy. Is the policy review schedule that we had spoken of as one of our declared projects for the year.
Yeah, so this is a revised, a revised schedule, because we didn't meet any of our deadlines that was in the previous version. But I think this is realistic. So in March, we'd be looking at some pretty big policies. And and what we're looking to do in in this is deal with all the kind of collection, maintenance and selection stuff. So this is actually going to be consolidating a number of these into one policy. And the procedure is 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 in the policy manual, but it's not policy, it's a procedure. So we want to rescind it from the policy manual, but share with you what that procedure is. Which we know that we have that procedure in our procedural manual. So that's March, and then we're just kind of plugging away at at things one by one. So I don't know, I don't have much else to say about it, but if you have questions, I can answer any questions that you have.
I have an embarrassing one.
Go ahead.
CBMW BP.
That's Kathy Billings, Maida Wong, Barb Posner, and Sean Fay is on there for the community. Yeah, that's, those are. Sorry, sorry, yeah, that's just the staff responsible. I I should have put a little key down at the bottom.
Can I, can I just ask, cause there's a lot of publicity, a lot of uproar about banned books and parents demanding and librarians are retiring and quitting, moving away. So in this, in this, I don't, I don't think our city, we haven't had any controversies. I don't know if we've had any controversy, but within these policies, how are librarians and librarians dealing with this? These parental.
I mean, that's precisely kind of what that policy is for, so that you have in writing how you make decisions about what you're going to add to your collection and what what principles you follow and what guidelines you use. So it's a really, that's why we're focusing on this, because it's really important and it hasn't been updated since two thousand and one. So with the climate, the way that it is, I mean, we haven't had any challenges, but, yeah, we wanna be ready for that. So, yes, that's, that's what this is all about in many ways. You know, it's so that people can have access and read for themselves about how we make the decisions that we make. And then the, in April, we have the request for reconsideration of library materials.
I noticed that.
Which is related, so, you know, it spells out the policy for when someone does object to an item. What are the steps that are taken? So that'll be in April, so that will be also updated. I can bring my schedule, but that also probably hasn't been updated in years and it may not be very different now. The material selection policy and the maintenance policy are, we've made a lot of changes. It's, it was over, overdue.
Just so I kind of understand, all these policies that you're talking about and the the fact that it's Kathy Billings or Maida Wong. These are things that the library staff is doing, or are the trustees in any way participating in the the policy?
Well, we're doing like the draft revisions and then bringing them to the board.
Okay, yeah, these are all policies that do exist that haven't been updated.
Right.
And some of them go back thirty years, I think.
Yeah, but but Ed, don't, weren't when you were on the board, weren't you?
Well, we were trying and and I got a kick out of one of them where we wanted to get rid of stuff. And I think it even said in the policy, so we can junk it or something like that, you know, not very official sounding words. Challenging to 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 decommission catalog, yeah. I think we were getting rid of a very old printer that didn't work.
Yeah.
But we had to actually have a policy to be able to do that. But, yeah, I think, so these will be things that we will be reviewing after it's presented. Okay.
And staff. And staff can, I mean, I think a lot, a lot of the policies, you know, the staff have the expertise and the knowledge of what's actually happening in the library profession to to kind of draft the policies. Which is isn't to say that we don't want input and feedback, but I think it makes sense for the staff to say, here's what we think is you know, best practice.
Subject matter experts, we would come to you, if we were trying to draft policies, we'd find a subject matter expert, and that's you.
Right, and then you'll have feedback for us, I'm sure, and maybe some really good insights about, you know, you don't wanna say it that way because unintended consequences, who knows? So, yeah, we definitely need feedback and input, but we will create the first dab at it. There may be policies that that us, like a subcommittee of the board could work on, and I haven't thought about that, but something we could think about. But I think with most things, because it's been so long since they've been looked at, that it really is, they're out of sync with modern practice and you need a look by the by the librarians.
Okay, well, great. Does anyone else have any question on any of that?
The only one I'll make one more mention of, if you don't mind, is in August, I have art donation and display. So it's something we've talked about. I've been pushing the city to work on a policy at the city level. So that then we can have our own policy. The Public Art Commission is going to be looking at a staff report in February that raises this issue and talks about policy and what it should be like. And I've had meetings with the Deputy Director of Community Development, Alison Becker, who's the liaison to the Public Art Commission. And with the City Manager's Office, who's working on this, to kind of talk about, I wanna make sure that that conversation includes the Board of Trustees, you know, the the Public Art Commission in the municipal code has the authority, is given authority for accepting, you know, approving donations of art. But the library trustees have authority to accept donations and property. So there's sort of, we need to make sure we figure out what that looks like when somebody comes to us. And that you guys have the authority that we want you to have to make decisions for the library. So that's, that's just in process, and I wanted to let you know that they're working on that. But I'm kind of working along with them to make sure that they understand the nexus, which they do.
Yes, then the, I'm sure then the city staff and the council are working on the public arts, the out, the exterior, the outside of the grounds and the buildings themselves, the city-owned grounds and buildings.
Yeah, well, I mean, the policy, I I think they're specifically looking at, this policy is about donations. You know, what, when somebody approaches the city and wants to donate a piece of art, what happens? What criteria are used? You know, what are the considerations? What are the restrictions, you know? What are the the terms? If someone gives us an artwork, do we, we have the authority to dispose of it in any way we want at any time? You know, I I, they need to figure that out. And there are some other cities that have really good policies in place already. So I have a feeling, you know, they'll be pulling from other examples.
So that's like if somebody donated like a statue and they said, we want the statue to go into the library park or something like that.
Right, okay. Right.
Okay.
At the risk of delaying our meeting a little, I do recall that several months ago, we were reviewing augmentation and or changes to the city ordinances, the library policies, to bring everything into line with and congruity with state regulations. And we did quite an extensive edit, and then we never heard back on that.
Yeah, we did, we spent a lot of time on that and it sort of got stalled. Yeah, we did, we spent a lot of time on that and it sort of got stalled um. With the city attorney, it's not that the city attorney is not wanting to move forward, but it, it became. Kind of a, a big thing, so I sort of put it on the back burner, but it's definitely something we, I would like to see. Completed, because I think it's important and, and every time. You know, when I'm looking at the municipal code, like I was when we were talking about art donations, you know, it's, it's, you know, you read it and it's. It's very broad and it doesn't, you know, so, so basically the city attorney um. Ba- basically, he said that the, the thing that we would need to do, in his opinion, is to essentially. Have the council um delegate those responsibilities. Basically, because the state law says we have all these responsibilities. There has to be some mechanism to say, well, here's, here's what exactly they are and maybe you're, don't have authority for this thing or that thing. Because some of the things that we did, we didn't, we didn't put, you know, the board doesn't have authority to set the library's budget or whatever. So I think that we need the city attorney to help us and it's just a matter of getting back on. And the city manager needs to be on board. I think it, I think the city manager. Th- this idea that we needed to do this predates her and so I think um. She needs to, we, I need to talk with her more about it, so she understands what our objective is. Um I think that she's, she was surprised about, you know. That the, the board is involved in perhaps the director's evaluation or in the director's hiring. Like, that's all new information for her, so I think that I just need to spend a little bit more time with her and then also. With the city attorney trying to get there. So it's sort of poised, I mean, we, we have all the changes we want, we know what that looks like. We just need to, you know. Exactly, exactly. And it really, it's my fault. I mean, it just became something that.
I think you made a, a strategic decision that there were other things, especially considering that the quest was something we were asking, considering the time. It made sense. I just, I'd like to just raise the issue again.
Yes, yeah, it's on my mind all the time.
Looking from a, a written document and then we were editing or, yeah, can we get, was that circulated yet?
Um, yeah, I can send you the most recent, I mean, I basically have. I, I have to look at what it looks like, but there's a comparison of the, like the state law. The current municipal code and then the proposed changes to the municipal code, is I think how it's sort of laid out. So I can share that if, if you want to refresh, or I, we can bring it, we can bring it to the meeting next, next time.
Maybe, maybe what we could do so that we don't, um and at the risk of, of, of belaboring our, our agendas. Um maybe you could discuss with the city manager if this is something that could be. Uh a project that we can expect to move forward in the next three months. And then once we know that, then we can bring it back in and let's, let's open, open it up and look at it one more time, because it'll be a, a fresh on agendas.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sorry for that uh uh abbreviation, but I thought it made sense considering it came up in the uh. The art donation policy and whatnot.
Yeah.
So I, I think that uh we're moving to uh item eight, which is our library operations update, which you.
Yeah, so I have a, I have a not too long of a list. Um one thing is follow-up from the last meeting. You'll remember that the FICA um budget was over, you know, over, overspent. Finance thinks that that is because part-time employees were not taken into account when they budgeted. So that will be corrected with a mid-year budget adjustment and they'll do the math and, and figure that out. So that's what that was about. Um I wanted to let you know that I had my annual performance evaluation with the city manager. Um she laid out some goals for me for the coming year, so I wanted to share those with you guys, did you know? So one is obviously implementation of the strategic plan. Um the implementation of RFID, which is the radio frequency identification technology. Um developing new library communication materials. Um develop a funding program, which I had to ask her, what do you mean by that? And I think she's thinking about kind of longer term in terms of we need to raise money to build a new building, so.
Kind of what we just talked about.
Yeah, I think that's what that's about. Um and then she wants us to also really be. Um looking at library programming and making sure we're getting return on our investment. Um which is what we do all the time anyway, and I explained to her that that's a process that, you know, now that we do have a public services team. That's part of our planning process is we sit down and look at what worked, what didn't work, let's do this again next year, let's, let's. Decided, you know, so, so those are the goals that she has for me.
Can I ask one question?
Yeah.
How does that compare substantively to what it was last year? I'm just wondering if we take any message from what she's saying.
No, I don't. Um last year, last year, the goal included getting the strategic plan done. Um seeing the parcel packs, you know, getting it on the ballot and doing all that. Um I'm trying to think what else was on there. Um some of the um kind of reorg in the support services division, which I really is not. Completed, so that's something that we'll continue to work on, but she didn't call it out in, in this year's goals. So, you know, oh, some of the goals are things that I said, these are my goals and she included them and some are things that she. Thought of on her own, so.
What was the, could you go into detail? What was on about communications?
Develop new library communication materials. I think that's about, you know, potentially, which is in the strategic plan. Um branding of for the library. I, I think it.
I, what, what left to my mind was, as you said, the strategic, in, in answer to Kenny's earlier question. Now that we have the strategic plan, we get to create a document that is even more abbreviated and easier to digest. And that would probably, I wouldn't fall into that.
Right, right. Yeah. Um I wanted to let you know that the patio furniture has been ordered. Yep, so uh we expect delivery at the end of March and then, of course, I need public works to help us get it installed, so. But it's, they have lots of notice, since March, the shipping date is March, so that gives us some time, but we're excited about that. Um recruitment updates, the support services librarian, full-time new position that was approved for this fiscal year. We have interviews on February twenty second, so first round, so we'll see how that goes. Um we have aides that are in the background check process, so hopefully they will soon be cleared to start because we're. Mind if we have two vacancies, maybe three? Um and then we've also decided that it's time to fill our library administration clerk position. That's a position that's been on the books for, since before COVID and we've never filled it, um but. Community room rentals are really picking up and um Sean needs the help, so that one should post soon. This is just a heads up, um Cersei Dynex, which is our inter-integrated library system, backbone of everything we do. We signed a five-year contract with them previously and that contract expires in December two thousand and four, so right in the middle of our fiscal year. And our billing cycle with them is the, is the fiscal year July to June, so it's kind of awkward, so I think what we're going to do is um. Work on a new contract that would be starting July first, so that the contract, so basically just giving up the last six months. Of the old contract and starting a new contract six months early, so that's something we just came to that conclusion. You know, I, I had reached out to them saying, we need to talk about, this is coming up and what's going to happen, so. So that'll be taking some time over the next couple of months to work on that, yeah.
For the record, for anyone who's uh watching this later or reading a transcript, I think you meant twenty twenty four, you said twenty nine or four.
Yeah, I'm twenty twenty four.
I, I, I hope so.
Yeah, twenty twenty four, I'm living in the past, I don't know why. Um so that's, just so you know, that's on our plate and that will be a big um, you know, take some, some time and effort. Um. I wanted to let you know, and I, I don't have the statistics compiled in a way that I can share yet, but in January, well, in December and January. We did um counts of people in the building at eleven AM, two PM, four PM and seven PM. So we have really good numbers about kind of when we're busy, I mean, you know, in the, at four PM, there's anywhere from fifty-five to seventy-five. People in the library, using the library, every seat is taken, so I think it'll be interesting to look at those. Um and I'll share that with you once we've kind of compiled it in a way that is useful. Um storytime resumed on January tenth, uh we've had four hundred and fifty-four attendees in, since January tenth. So kids are turning out and families are there. Um the bookmark contest, which is part of our summer reading program and it's a really. Exciting, popular thing because the kids that, whose designs win, get bookmarks made and they get passed out all summer. That's going on right now and the, the um entries are due March first. And then I mentioned this last month, but we're screening um the silent film Pollyanna on February twenty eighth. Which should be a lot of fun and that's all that I have for operations updates.
That's a lot, you guys are keeping busy.
Welcome on, ask one question.
Yeah.
You know, um when we have last time of discussion about the new mobile social services, you know, we haven't heard like how much. Uh the library staff have had to call on that, you know, what's been happening, if there's more or less individuals experiencing homelessness around the library. But if we could get an update, you know, um every two months or so, of just, um, you know, what staff are seeing on that side, I think it'd be helpful for us to.
Yeah, kind of just again, the safety and.
I'm like, you know, is it more or less, you know, the things that we should keep on our radar and not for the. I, I know you're probably not prepared to talk on this day, but like, um, you know.
Yeah, I, I mean, I could talk a little bit about it, but I, yeah, I can do it unless you want a quick summary, but I'll bring it next month.
Let's, let's have statistics to back it up. Prior to the meeting last month, uh we did briefly discuss um response times on the day that they're here. Uh is great and uh and one thing that I could augment, when that program was unveiled. There was some discussion of it being, you know, one day for each city, but then moving to a all days for all cities. And moving to where the need was and I'm wondering what the status of that shift is.
Um, yeah, I can ask, but we, we do, council gets updates about what's going on with those programs and those are shared with staff. So I've seen those um and, and that team continues to meet the cities that are participating. Um so yeah, they're, they're still finding their way, I would say, and I don't think they're, I don't think the hours and the. Assignments are changing, but I know that um the cities want the vendor to do more outreach. You know, they, they kind of had a, a meeting recently and talked about sort of what's working, what's not working, so they're, they're still, I mean, again, it's just work in progress, I think. But they do have, you know, they have statistics that I can share with you about, they worked with this many people and did this many things and. And um, you know, I can share what I have with you.
Okay, um any other comments uh for the operation?
Nope, that was it.
All right, so I guess we're on nine, board communications, board president, um it's just taking some notes, but I think I can. Go from memory here, uh I would like to congratulate uh formally congratulate library staff. Uh and uh give acknowledgement, thanks to you as well as to uh the company that assisted us. Um and to say job well done to all of us, we did put in some uh work on this uh on the strategic plan. Uh and I'm very glad to see the um regulation uh refresh back on track. Uh and look forward to working uh with the staff on getting those updated so that we can. Again, meet not only our goal, but meet the uh the needs of our, our users, customers, clients. Uh I think we have different names for them, various points in the uh, in the document. But that, uh thank you. And uh why don't we go to Bianca, so I guess item ten is rest of board.
Yeah, I agree with everything you just said, Bean, and I just, again, I'm so happy that Ed is with us. Uh you know, past, past experience really helps with today, so thank you. And it's wonderful, Janet, that you're our liaison. So yeah, I'm looking forward to working with both of you.
I just echo everything Bianca.
Um yeah, I, I guess uh the big thing for the strategic plans, so thank you Kathy, everybody who had a hand in, in uh, in bringing it along to where it is. I was a skeptic initially and uh. I guess I would offer that uh I met with Kathy about ten days ago, something like that, to kind of get, get started. And very next day is the big article in the LA Times about library boards and librarians being under attack. But I'm happy to do my bit, so. Welcome, uh I, again. Why don't we talk to our council liaison communications now?
So, first of all, thank you, this was a really great meeting and I wanted to just say thank you to Kathy as well. She and I had a meeting um a couple of weeks ago, where I got my new library card. And um, and I think what you're doing here and the strategic plan is amazing. So that's, I know that's a ton of work, um and it's synthesized to a nice succinct document, but I know there's thousands that I've heard. So thank you for that. Um as I was just saying, my own opinion about the library, I think it's just so central to this. It's particularly to this city. Um and we had a couple, Kathy and I had a little conversation about kind of the senior center and coordinating with maybe teams. And we talked about the teen center, so I think that there's, although you've done a terrific job in this strategic plan, which is so important. I think there's, the next step is in, in longer terms, strategic plan, which is really exciting. I actually think that one of the things for South Pass is really like, what does South Pass twenty fifty look like? Um and I think that the, the library is a big part of that and I think with the housing element and two thousand more housing units. In a city that already has ten thousand over the next eight years, it's, it's going to change the needs of the library as well. So um I, I've talked to a lot of people about library, I think there's people interested in private funding. For a, for a library construction, I know Sally would do a great job of sharing that. I'm just kidding. Um I had the grant money, I just think there's, I think there's a lot of exciting opportunities, so anyway, those are my thoughts, but thank you.
Well, thank you, Janet, um and uh I did want to uh again acknowledge you as our new ch- uh uh council liaison. Um and I'm excited to see the fresh eyes that you'll bring and excited to hear your enthusiasm for libraries in general. And our library specifically.
Yeah, a big, I'm, I'm a big education, first of all, I think libraries are just so important to communities. Um for so many reasons, right, right, public gathering spot for the kids, I mean, my own kids, um although they didn't go to the South Pass schools. Um but we were here working on reports and, you know, um it's just, was been fabulous for my family, so. It's super important.
Welcome. Uh so uh friends.
Okay, so my point's just a little bit longer than normal because um just wanted to give you an overview of like the state of trends for two thousand. But we did hold our annual meeting um on January twenty sixth and we, we um voted on our new slate of officers. We voted on our two thousand twenty-three budget and we updated our bylaws. And so um I just want to give you a little some, some statistics from our year of two thousand twenty-two. Um so here are some of our accomplishments and again, I'm going to, you know, reference two thousand twenty-one, not taking away from anybody on that. But just so you can see that the growth, I think that we had, that we're back and we're really, have had some rejuvenation. So membership in two thousand twenty-one, we finished the year with two hundred and sixteen members for a total of twenty-one thousand one hundred and fourteen dollars. Uh in two thousand twenty-two, we had three hundred and sixteen, three hundred and sixty-three members. For a total of forty-four thousand three hundred and ten dollars. So that's huge. Our bookstore raised forty-five thousand two hundred and forty dollars and fifty-nine cents on books that are. Quarter fifty cents, so. It's just. It's amazing. Um our restoration concerts um series saw really growth in all their areas. Uh in two thousand twenty-two, there was a total of seventeen thousand seven hundred and fifty-three donations compared to seven. Two thousand twenty-two, there was a total of seventeen thousand seven hundred and fifty-three donations compared to seven thousand. Four hundred and ninety-one, so this total income for this year was thirty-five thousand nine hundred and forty-eight compared to. Eighteen thousand eight hundred last, last year. And through all this, with all this money that we raise, and I'm not gonna read all the things that, but we, um, support. Quite a bit of the library services, so, um. That's kind of where our numbers were, I'm really excited about that. Um, so for our board meeting, um, our new board members have been meeting with everybody and we're transitioning, we met with communication. Getting to know everybody, we will have our very first board meeting of our new term is, um, this, I mean, Thursday, the sixteenth. Um, six-thirty and do we still have the same liaisons, that was my question. From, from the trustees.
I believe so.
We haven't, at, we're in March, we'll be doing the.
So for that, okay, um, so we hope to have our, our newsletter to go out in, um, again, in March, but we'll work on that. And then I noticed that I think on the agenda was the serving with the purpose, we are also. I would really like to have our, all of our new board members attend serving with the purpose in May. Um, the friends signed up, um, with the showcase house of design to, uh, help staff us. And so, um, with each shift that we work, we will get forty dollars. On the shift, so I'm gonna attend training with Kristen Dubay this Saturday and we'll have more information to pass on. So for the new year, we already have, um, ninety-six members for a total of eight thousand three hundred and ten dollars and I have. In all the books that I picked up today, so we're, you know, we're back on there, so like I'm gonna always do it every single meeting. If you haven't joined with the friends or renewed your friends, please join your friends, it's easy to go on. If you've got our newsletter, we use this QR code that you can do, or you just go and enjoy the friends. Um, so the restoration concerts have three more. Um, concerts in their series and so the next one is March nineteenth and it will feature Robert Pies on piano and Karazin. I think that's how you say it, peacock and violin. Um, so our new, uh, board member who's doing communication is gonna help out with the website. Still working with Jericho Road as of today and, um, and then we're hoping to get our Instagram up and running again. There's just been some glitches with that, but we will. Um, we, um, just some little statistics, we have about two hundred and eight members that follow us on Facebook. Which is not too bad, um, and the book sale had a hundred and seventy-one likes for the holiday one and seventeen engagements in our, our last. Well, not the current, um, posting for the restoration concerts, but they had a hundred and twelve likes with eight engagements. Most of our followers are women, seventy-four percent versus twenty, twenty-six and men, and believe it most of them are in the Alhambra. Al Passadena area, and again, I also want to thank the staff, you know, the staff for all your support, all the things that you do for the library, um. Um, and we, just so some of you who don't know, we do have a committee, it's called the Twenty-First Century Committee on the Friends. Which is the major fundraising, whenever we are told that we need to. Start it up again, it is to help with all the capital campaign, um, you know, we already have the five oh one three, so you don't have to apply, so that would. Hopefully, something that when it's time that we can, um, engage then again, so that's my report.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
And that was not longer than usual, that was.
I was allowed to say.
It was an unusual thorough job and it's exciting to hear those statistics, um, and thank you for your leadership on friend. Wonderful, just really wonderful. Um, you know, there's, uh. A lot of discussion about, what is it, a, a century of, of friends of libraries that, 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 this year. Um, not necessarily our friends, but.
I didn't read on my beginning, I just kept that up, but it was all about the history when I had my board, uh, the report. It's about how the friends started, what year it started, so I have that all here, it started nineteen twenty-two in Glen Eleanor, Illinois, so.
Yeah.
So you, you, uh, you do the organization part.
Oh, well, thank you, thank you very much.
Trustee liaison to the friends.
And I, and I, uh, went to the meeting, I just want to say they are. Well-run meetings and they have three new members, young people, so that was great, just the three new young people.
Under the age of thirty-five.
And then, yeah, and they all, uh.
All went to South Pass, we live in South Pasadena.
So they all, yeah.
And then we have a new CFO who answered an ad.
Yeah.
And she slipped here for, I think, nineteen years and, uh, is a former banker and. Went to the restoration concerts and she was already there with some of her family, so.
Yeah.
Already engaging, so that's great.
Yeah. And, uh, and I liked the way you, um, the, you guys, with your bylaws, they really, they tightened up the language and it was. Very, very good, so we need to probably. Do that, too, it was very, very good, the cleanup and the tightening of the language and that's solid, and then I. Um, Ellen, I can go on the sixteenth, I'll just go. I, I don't know if I'm gonna be reappointed, but I am available to go on the sixteenth.
Okay, I will include you in our. Board packet.
We will still be on that day, because we won't, or, or.
We're gonna.
March.
Yeah, the nominating committee needs to.
Yeah, Kenny, we need that in March.
But it'll be March, so February sixteenth, uh. Is that February sixteenth or March sixteen?
Yeah, February sixteen.
That's just next week.
Yeah.
It's, it's.
Oh, it's an evening meeting because I, I'm chairing an advance.
What time, six thirty you said?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine, I can attend, yeah.
Well, for once, because we usually, um, you know, beyond the usual, says I have nothing to add. And when I asked, uh, library director for her communication, she usually says she has nothing to add, but it looks like we've got something here, so.
Oh, yes, well, you mean the serving with the purpose thing?
Item fourteen.
I know, I forgot to cover that, that was part of library operations, but I forgot about it, yeah, so it. I, I basically, they didn't have like a handout that I could print, so I kind of took the information from the website and just compiled it for you guys. If anybody is interested in attending the Serving with the Purpose Conference and you can see kind of. What the theme is this year and who the speakers are, um, the, you know, the city will pay your registration, so you just need to let me know. Um, if you are interested in attending and we'll, you know, get you registered. Um, like Ellen said, a number of the friends will probably go.
Yep.
So sometimes there's car wheeling and. But I know it's, you know, it's a whole day.
It's a whole.
Ontario, a weekday, and it's leaving really early.
Yeah.
But, yeah, so you can stay there, many people get hotels and, but it's not that far, kind of drive. So just, yeah, just send us an email if you are interested, I mean, I think that it's, it's meant for trustees and friends, but I do think it kind of. Leans toward friends, yeah. At least this year, I think.
I've been a couple times, I thought it was wonderful.
Yeah, it was great, yeah. And then during COVID, they did it over Zoom and we went. Yeah, yeah, we, I, I watched a few of the, so it was good.
I mean, and look at this, the meaning of life.
I know, yeah. They went all out. So that, sorry about that, and then as far as my final communications, um, just echoing how excited I am to have Ed joining us on the board. He left the board before my time, so I've heard about Ed all, you know, over the years. Yeah, all good, but, um, it's exciting to have him back on the board and his expertise, um, and knowledge will really, I think, help us. And it's super excited to have Janet as our new liaison, very exciting to have someone new who supports libraries and, um. I think will be a great asset to us, so thank you to all of you guys.
Outstanding, well, with that, at eight twenty-four PM.
Give me one moment to, uh, end the recording.